Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting held at NYC City Planning Commission here in Rome, Lower Concourse 120 Broadway. Today is Wednesday, January 22, 2020. As a courtesy during the proceedings, we ask that you please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. All speakers should fill out a speaker's card. In addition, we ask that those providing testimony, please identify yourself, limit your remarks to three minutes, and speak clearly into the microphone. I will now call the roll. Chair Lago.
Here.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bernie.
Here.
Commissioner Capelli.
Here.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Here.
Commissioner Duex. Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marin.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, January 8, and special public meeting of Tuesday, January 21, 2020.
The minutes, all in favor. Opposed, minutes are approved.
Scheduled in calendar numbers one and two, we have resolutions for adoption scheduled in Wednesday, February 5, 2020, for a public hearing to be held at NYC City Planning Commission hearing room, Lower Concourse 120 Broadway.
On the resolutions, all in favor. Opposed, resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the Report Section on Page 3. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 3, CD14, C190438ZMK, in a matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 2513-2523 Avenue O rezoning. For a favorable report on calendar number 3.
Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 3. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 4, CD2, C190265ZSM, in a matter of an application for the grant of a special permit concerning 503 Broadway. For a favorable report on calendar number 4. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, I'm really pleased with the responsiveness of the applicant to the issues that were raised by the community board with respect to their operations. And I think we're setting a better model for large-scale stores in SoHo. I vote yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 4. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 5, CD2M840260FLDM, in a matter of an application for the modification of a previously approved restrictive declaration concerning 46-74 Guns' Road Street. For a favorable report on calendar number 5. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
The applicant has made a number of commitments, important commitments, I think, to the community board about items that will be addressed in the restrictive declaration that is a part of this application, that restrictive declaration won't be finalized until, I expect that it gets to the city council, but I assume and hope that my vote is conditioned on those additional commitments being included in the restrictive declaration, but I vote yes on that condition.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar number 5 has been adopted. Excuse me. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 6 through 9. Calendar number 6, CD3N200119RCR, concerning 1824 and 28 Bedell Avenue. Calendar number 7, N200191RCR, concerning 29 and 31 Everton Avenue. Calendar number 8, N200138RCR, concerning 585 Le Mans Avenue. Calendar number 9, N190288RCR, concerning 301 Sheldon Avenue, in the matter of applications for the grant of certifications for adoption on calendar number 6 through 9.
Chair Lago. Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 6 through 9 have been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 10 through 14. Calendar number 10, CD1N190328CAR. Calendar number 11, N190329CAR, concerning 70 Cedar Terrace. Calendar number 12, N190330CAR. Calendar number 13, N190331CAR. Calendar number 14, N190332CAR, concerning 74 Cedar Terrace. In the matter of application for the grant of authorizations for adoption on calendar numbers 10 through 14. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 10 through 14 have been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 15, CD3N180473RCR, in the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning 536 Sinclair Avenue. For adoption on calendar number 15. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar number 15 has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 16, CD2N200126ZAR, in the matter of an application for the grant of an authorization concerning 238 Eden Borough Road. For adoption on calendar number 16. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 17 through 19 have been adopted. Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers 20 and 21. Calendar number 20, CD8N200174ZAX. Calendar number 21, N200175ZAX. In the matter of application for the grant of authorizations concerning 5051 Iceland Avenue, for adoption on calendar numbers 20 and 21. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 20 and 21 have been adopted.
Yes.
I did 16.
Did you? Did we do 17 to 19?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Why?
I know, there was confusion, I believe that. Should have been called the vote on 16 and instead it was 19.
You said this.
Oh, okay.
So you call 17 through 19.
So that there's no confusion, could we do 16, 17, 18, 19 again?
Okay. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 16, CD2N200126CAR, in the matter of an application for the grant of an authorization concerning 238 Eden Borough Road. For adoption on calendar number 16. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar number 16 has been adopted. Borough of the Bronx, calendar number 17 through 19. Calendar number 17, CD8N200171ZAX. Calendar number 18, N200172ZAX. Calendar number 19, N200173ZAX. In the matter of application for the grant of authorization concerning 3 Alderbrook Road, Greenfield residence, for adoption on calendar numbers 17, 18, and 19. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Sorry.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 17, 18, and 19 have been adopted. Okay. The next part of the calendar is the Public Hearing Section on Page 14. We are going to do calendar number 30 first. Borough of Queens, calendar number 30, CD7N20055PXQ, a public hearing in the matter of a notice of intent to acquire office space concerning Queens Community Board 7.
Our first speaker will be Christine Stoddard.
My name is Christine Stoddard. I'm with DCAST Real Estate Services in the leasing unit. Regarding Community Board 7 in Queens, I would like to preface by saying this was an emergency relocation deal. The community board had been in its current location on 41st Road under lease for the past 15 years. The landlord had originally been willing to renew with a sudden change of heart in the last year leading up to the renewal. My understanding is his plans are that he would like to redevelop the building that they are currently in. So we did not have a lot of time to make this relocation happen, and we were fortunate enough to find a location and a landlord willing to work with us. That being said, the relocation space is at 3050 Whitestone Expressway. It's a five-year term. We also have two consecutive options to renew at this location for five years each at 85% fair market value. The rent per square foot is $39.30, which is actually just slightly lower than the rent that they are paying at the current location on 41st Road. The landlord is also providing three exclusive parking spaces as well as unlimited parking in the lot adjacent to the building for the community board meetings on a first-come, first-served basis. The landlord is performing all of the alterations and improvements at his sole cost, and they expect to be completed within 30 days of execution. We are moving this execution along as quickly as possible. In order to avoid the landlord beginning the eviction process, he did make it clear when we were initially discussing that I would have to relocate the community board, that timing was of the essence, and I didn't think we had adequate time to get them out by their expiration. Their lease expired October 31 of 2019, and the landlord assured me that he would not begin the expiration until the end, I mean, I'm sorry, the eviction until the end of 2019. As to date, he has not given any eviction notice, primarily because we have made so much progress on the renewal. I think he feels it's a waste of his time and resources, and he sees that we are doing our best to get out of the building as quickly as possible. We are expecting execution approximately May of 2020.
Thank you. Questions from the commission. Commissioner Levin.
Oh, sorry. I'm just curious, why is this a CPC matter? I mean, DCAST's leasing stuff.
The lease of city land.
Do they all come to us?
They come before us, yes.
Okay.
Take it from me, David. Many, many years.
Spoken authoritatively.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Levin. Yes, I had a question about what else might have been available.
Sure.
Certainly, it sounds like you've been through an adventure.
Yes.
Trying to identify this space and negotiate acceptable terms, so.
Yes.
That has to be a big relief.
Sure.
But help us understand, so, but this location is remote from mass transit, you know, at the edge of the community district, in a neighborhood with downtown flushing being kind of the center of everything. It'll make it very difficult for community board members and members of the public to easily get to public, whatever public meetings are held there. Can you tell us a little bit about the search for this location? Is it really the case that there is nothing closer to central flushing that would have worked?
Of course. We have three major obstacles. One was the available space and the timing in which the city is able to move to make a deal. You know, flushing in particular is sort of a booming market at the moment. The smaller office spaces are usually tenants that I would qualify as likely non-incumbered. They're not going to have all of the political red tape that we have to make a deal and to execute. So those leases go off the market very quickly, and we were just not able to compete in some of those spaces. The other issue we had was size. There were several spaces that were just too large for OMB to give approval. They were probably double, over 3,000 square feet, 4,000. And on a few of them, even though the price per square foot was cheaper, because the landlord was not willing to cut up the space, those were not available options that OMB was going to approve for us. And I think I had one more point that I wanted to tell you. Nope, that was it, just timing and the space that was available.
So is there much build-out that has to be done? Any money spent making this space ready for Board 7?
The landlord is covering the build-out costs. We kept things very simple. The space didn't need that much, and because time is of the essence, the landlord has committed to doing this work at sole cost in under 30 days from execution.
Okay. Well, you know, with so much new development going on in flushing, maybe this is an opportunity for us to keep an eye out for something more centrally located as part of a new project where we could allocate space to a city office.
Sure. I mean, we also have, only have a five-year term here. We do have the two five-year renewal options if it's preferential to stay, and we also have an option to go if we find that more suitable.
Good, thank you. Other questions? Thank you. Our next speaker will be Gene Kelty.
My name is Eugene T. Kelty Jr. I'm the chairperson of Community Board 7. I understand the commissioner's concern that she had about being out of flushing. Let me give you a little history. I'm 35 years on Community Board 7. I was the chair from 95 to 2000 when we had term limits. I'm sorry, I was the chair from 90 to 95, then we had term limits, then we came back, we got rid of term limits, and I've been the chair ever since. So I've been 24 years as a chair. This is my third move. I'm very happy for this move. I've been in flushing, I understand what the commissioner was talking about, but a lot of our people now use internet, they use mail, they call us on the telephones. We have never been unreachable, we've always been reachable. As far as our public hearing, and I want to thank DCAST for moving on this because as Sheil told you, it is an emergency because he didn't want to renew our contract. We've had numerous problems with this landlord. We had him pull vents from the ceilings that were full of dirt, and he wouldn't do it. We've had a lot of problems with it, and when he chose not to renew it, he asked for immediate help, and DCAST came forward, and we appreciate it, we understand the commissioner's concerns. There are four bus lines that go into that area. There's ample parking, which most of the people come to drop off stuff to our office that didn't have in the downtown flushing area. And our public hearings are still going to be at the nursing homes because it's more accommodable for the people, and that's also serviced by several bus lines. So I'm here to answer any questions for you, to let you know we're very happy for the move. It's not, we don't want to do it. Quite frankly, nobody likes to move, and if anything, I love spending the city's money, so if you wanted to give me better spots, I'd be glad to take it and spend as much money as possible. But I think that we got a lower price. I think we're getting the landlord to do the work that they asked us to do, and I'm very pleased with it, and I do understand the commissioner's concern. That's why I wanted to come down to just let you know we thought about it, we tried to work on it, but because of the emergency, that's why we're asking for expediting it.
Thank you, and thank you also for your years of service. The community boards are our lifeblood.
Thank you, and I want to thank this commissioner over here, because he trained me a lot too when he sat on the Borough Board with us. Thank you.
Questions?
Dismissed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners.
There are no other folks who are signed up to speak on this matter, but if anyone is interested in being heard, please come forward. The public hearing is closed.
Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 22, CD3C190453HAK, a public hearing in the matter of an application for U-DAB designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property concerning Rochester Sutem.
We are going to have a 10-minute presentation by an applicant team comprised of Felipe Gortles, Ira Brown, Olga Jobe, Jack Heaney, and then available for questioning are Lynn Zheng, Joyce Quinn, and David Cunningham.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Felipe Gortez, a borough planner at HPD. I'm here to introduce Rochester Sutem, a homeownership project that will result in the construction of seven new, well-designed buildings across multiple sites, resulting in approximately 78 new co-op units in Bedford-Stuyvesant. I'm joined here by other representatives from HPD and the development team, who will introduce themselves in the presentation or when they have, or when they answer questions as needed.
Please keep going.
HPD is seeking U-DAB designation and project approval and disposition of the city-owned properties located on the blocks and lots listed on this slide. The project site is located on the south portion of the Bedford-Stuyvesant neighborhood. The surrounding areas are mostly residential. Commercial and retail spaces can be found along Fulton Street. Some industrial uses can be found along Atlantic Avenue. The project site is well-served by public transportation. All sites are located within a quarter-mile of a subway station that are within walking Approval of the proposed land use actions will develop, will help develop 78 new affordable homeownership units in a neighborhood where affordable homeownership opportunities are rare. HPD is excited about this project as it provides a unique opportunity to develop long-standing vacant and underutilized city-owned land with much-needed affordable homeownership units. At this time, I turn the presentation to Jack Heaney from Falcon Properties. He will provide more details of the proposed project.
My name is Jack Heaney with Falcon Properties. I'm one of the co-developers for this project. As Felipe indicated, this project will be seven sites scattered over roughly a mile radius. So in the initial thinking of this project, we actually selected two architecture firms to ensure some variety in design approaches and aesthetics. That said, these teams work collaboratively, so there are several common elements to all of the buildings. Both teams studied the existing neighborhood through historic maps and photos. Based on that investigation, the facade designs all incorporate masonry with window openings that are based on proportions from the surrounding historic buildings in the neighborhood. Each building's entry and circulation is connected both visually and physically with outdoor spaces both in the front and rear yards. Each building features landscaping in the front yard, creating a buffer for the ground floor units on the street. Where possible, the ground floor units have also been raised to provide additional privacy for the ground floor units. All buildings are ADA-accessible and feature direct access to a rear yard recreation area that, via lobby, which is shared by all the residents. Each building's floor plan utilizes an open kitchen and living room with minimal circulation and oversized windows for increased light and air. Finally, each building will utilize a high-efficiency VRF system for heating and cooling and will meet, both meet and exceed Enterprise Green Communities and NASSERTA sustainability standards. The project is organized around three clusters. The first cluster, Cluster 1, is composed of two buildings, which are sister buildings. Each follows R6A bulk zoning rules. Each building is five stories in setback for both privacy and to match the adjoining property's street wall. Large bay windows provide generous natural light to the dining and kitchen area and creates a strong visual connection for residents along Herkimer Street. The ground floor has two one-bedrooms stacked front and back with two bedrooms above. This is a typical floor plan, inside plan. Cluster 2 follows, is comprised of three buildings. It follows R6B bulk zoning rules. For the Rochester property, there is direct passage to the rear yard, which is shared by two of the properties, shared gardens, and is also, is elevated for privacy from the street for the ground floor units. So there's a site plan of one, but in this site plan, you can see how the two properties are connected, and they'll share a common rear yard for more recreation space. The other building on Sutem has, features gray brick, which is designed to match, actually, no, I think this was the one with the gray brick. So some thought was given to this property so that the brick is similar to the adjoining neighbor, and there's also a glazed stairway for added visual connection to the street. The property along Sutem features grays brick, glazed stairs, and is also elevated for privacy. And Herkimer, which is a corner site, will feature red brick, again, to match adjoining properties on the block, has a garden entry, glazed stairwell, and is, will also have elevated ground floor units for added privacy. The third cluster, Cluster 3, is comprised of two buildings. The first, 329 Ralph Avenue, follows R6B bulk zoning rules, which has both a setback at the fifth floor as well as elevated ground floor units for added privacy along Ralph Avenue. Through units are provided for cross ventilation and bedroom privacy, so all of the bedrooms face the rear yard. The second building, here's a site plan and typical floor plan. And finally, the second building is 335 Ralph Avenue, which has a different zoning of R7D, which allows for more height. And similar to Herkimer Street buildings, we're providing large bay windows, provide general light to the kitchen and dining areas, and creates a strong visual connection for the residents along Ralph Avenue. The ground floor is typical, has two one-bedrooms with two two-bedrooms on the floors above. There's also a setback floor with additional recreation space on the, it's a site plan and typical floor plan. So as Felipe indicated in the introduction, this is an affordable homeownership project through HPD's Open Door program. There are a variety of AMIs provided, with the majority being at 100% of AMI, which for a family of four is an income approximately between $80,000 and $96,000 per year, with sales prices between $300,000 and $400,000 approximately. In summary, 100% of the project will be affordable homeownership, 13 vacant and underutilized city-owned lots with seven new construction buildings resulting in approximately 78 affordable homeownership units. Units will be affordable to a range of incomes from 80% to 110% of AMI. The unit mix is one and two bedrooms, with the majority two bedrooms. All the units will have dishwashers and washer-dryers. Amenities for each building include bike storage, elevator accessible, and shared recreational rear yards. The proposed buildings will be developed using Enterprise Green Communities as well as NASSERTA Sustainability Design Standards, and once again, it will be financed under HPD's Open Door program. Anticipated timeline, we're hoping to begin construction this summer on approval of city Inticipated timeline: We're hoping to begin construction this summer on approval of City Council, with anticipated construction completed in the summer of 2022. And that opens us up for questions.
Do any of the members of the applicant team wish to speak? Are they available for questions?
The rest of our team is available for questions.
Great, then I'll open it up to the Commissioners. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you for the presentation. I raised this question yesterday in review session. Since a lot of these sites, and in fact, most of them are infill and in the midst of low-rise communities, I'm just wondering, what consideration have you given? What do you contemplate around construction? How are you conducted in terms of hours of operation and weekends? Because obviously, with infill sites, you are literally, you know, on the other side of the wall from occupied housing. Have you given much thought to that?
We have, actually. So in the design of the cellars for each of these buildings, we've pulled back the cellars as far as we could from the adjoining property lines, which means we do not have to do any underpinning of the neighboring properties. We also do not need to use pile for creation of the cellars. So both those taken together significantly reduce the amount of impact that we would have on the neighboring buildings. In addition, Ira Brown from the Briarwood Organization, which is also the general contractor, can talk a bit about the schedule.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. To answer your question further, Briarwood is a 108-year-old, fifth-generation development and construction company that started building affordable housing back in the late 1980s. And we've done thousands of units of infill and affordable workforce housing. We follow all DOB, DEP, DOT regulations. We're also very experienced in dealing with the neighbors, becoming friendly with the neighbors, and trying to accommodate them as best we can. The hours that we work are all within DOB guidelines. If there was a requirement to do any kind of Saturday work, as you mentioned, that again would be an application that we would have to apply for and meet the requirements to do that.
And what do you project to be the construction time? You're going to be building these simultaneously, these sites?
Our intent is to start them and build them as close in timeframe as possible, not to phase them.
And the projected construction time at this point is?
I'd say 18 months to two years.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burley.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I really appreciate the effort to design modern buildings but are still contextual in terms of the brick and the massing and the street wall and so on. I think you've been pretty successful in that regard. But my question is, I'm assuming that these are homeownership. There has to be some entity that's taking care of the common areas and the roof and so on. Is there a separate condominium entity? And I'm particularly concerned, as I always am, about those planting areas that are used to screen the ground floor apartments, that if they're not well-maintained, you know, become a real eyesore and a problem.
Yes, I believe that, and the architects could talk about it, that we're using plantings that will stand up to the atmosphere that we have on the street, and they're native plants that will survive, hopefully. But we also are going to have condominium or co-op regimes that are going to be charged with maintaining all the common elements, including the landscaping.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just to further on that, we will be, now that we're getting closer to a construction start date, we will be working with a landscape designer to specify species that are both drought-resistant and low-maintenance.
Commissioner Capelli.
I'm sorry, you said condominium and co-op regimes?
More likely to be co-op regimes, but we're still discussing that with HPD under the Open Door.
So it wouldn't be two?
No.
It would be one or the other?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be a nightmare.
And they'd also be organized by cluster so that there's some common elements.
Other questions? Commissioner Levin.
Just to follow that, then. So we'd anticipate three separate entities, one for each cluster?
That is what's currently envisioned, yes.
Okay, that sounds like it makes more sense with these relatively small
Yeah, exactly.
--units, but also important to keep them sort of neighborhood-focused.
Right, especially for the two buildings that share a common rear yard.
Yeah, yeah. Can you or maybe HPD remind us of how the Open Door program works with respect to resales? How long will these units remain permanently affordable?
Hi, good morning. So for Open Door programs for the co-op--
Do you want to identify yourself, please?
Oh, sorry. My name is Joyce Kwan. I'm Deputy Director of the Open Door Program. So for cooperative programs, usually we have an Article 11 that's tied to the cooperative, and that has a regulatory period of 40 years. And so that's the long of our regulatory term. And so during resale, the owner of the unit is able to realize a 2% appreciation compounding per year. And then the home would need to be resold to a new owner that also needs to comply with income restrictions as well, under the program.
Okay. Has it ever happened that HPD has put in place a longer term of affordability than 40 years? 40 years goes by in the blink of an eye. These are important public assets, this affordable housing. And, you know, in a co-op, you kind of hope that the situation develops where the shareholders in the co-op, the homeowners, have a commitment to this kind of low-income co-op opportunity and become self-enforcing, adopt their own bylaws and their own restrictions, and ensure that the units remain affordable over a longer term. Has HPD ever worked with a co-op that has gone longer than 40 years?
Not to my knowledge at this point. I think the way that we're envisioning this currently is that at the end of the 40 years, they have the option to come back to us and renew the Article Tax, Article 11, and that would extend.
Okay, and that would be an incentive for them to?
Extend their affordability.
And as part of the Open Door program, do you work with co-ops, particularly brand-new ones that are just getting set up, to understand the responsibilities of managing a co-op, the things that a co-op board can and can't do, mostly the things that they're responsible for doing, to enforce good governance and proper maintenance of the building so that capital needs don't get forgotten about, and that meetings happen, and that, you know, it's a dynamic organization?
Right, so that's something that we're currently working on right now. We definitely will include homeownership and cooperative training, you know, to prepare these shareholders for when they do convert into the cooperative. So it's definitely something that's written into our program.
And to prepare the organizations to endure.
Right, exactly.
Other questions for the applicant team? Commissioner Ron Pershad.
In regards to the construction, is this going to be reinforced concrete or steel frame?
It'll be CMU with steel floor joists.
Okay.
C joists.
Last question. I believe on slide, we had Cluster Two on there. There's, I guess, a pathway that leads to the other buildings in the rear. Are you going to put like a--
Connection to the rear.
Is it going to be a gate up there?
Yes.
Okay, and that's accessible for the tenants, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? Then thanks to the applicant team.
Thank you to the Commissioners.
Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker will be Chen Tao Glasgow.
Sorry, he's actually with our team. It looks like there might have been oversight.
Thank you.
But he's a great speaker, though, so.
It will be noted in the record. Those are the only folks who have signed up to speak on this matter, but if anyone else is interested in being heard, please come forward. The public hearing is closed.
Barbara of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 23 and 24. Calendar number 23, CD2 C20059ZMK. Calendar number 24, N20060ZRK. A public hearing in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 90 Sands Street rezoning.
There will be a 10-minute presentation by an applicant team comprised of Judith Gallant, Brenda Rosen, Barbara Wilks, and available for questions, Alison Ruddock.
Good morning, Chair Lago and Commissioners. I'm Judy Gallant from Bryan Cave Leighton Peisner. On behalf of the applicant, which is an affiliate of Breaking Ground, I'm joined today by Brenda Rosen, who's the CEO of Breaking Ground, Barbara Wilks of W Landscape Architecture, and Alison Ruddock from VHB. We are here in connection with an application to rezone Brooklyn Block 87 to facilitate the conversion of an existing 29-story hotel building located at 90 Sands Street to a mix of supportive housing for formerly homeless adults and affordable housing for low and moderate-income adults, which in combination are a use Group III community facility use under the zoning resolution. The project block is located at the southern edge of Dumbo Heights in Brooklyn Community District 2, between the Manhattan and Brooklyn Bridges. It's bounded by High and Sands Streets on the north and south, and Jay and Pearl Streets on the east and west. The proposed rezoning area contains just two lots, which are under separate ownership but comprise a single zoning lot. Lot 9 contains the existing 90 Sands building, which is outlined in yellow here, which was constructed by the Watchtower in 1992 as a hotel for the Jehovah's Witnesses that were working in the Watchtower's buildings in the area. The building is 329 feet tall and contains a little more than 7 FAR of the 11 FAR that's constructed on the zoning lot. There's a 7,672-square-foot gated plaza along the J Street front edge of the property, which generated a bonus that was utilized by the Watchtower when it constructed the building. Proposed improvements to this plaza to bring it more into compliance with design guidelines, make it more open and inviting to the public, require a chair certification. That is the subject of a separate application on which the applicant has been working with the department and which will be filed shortly. Lot 5, to the west of the project site, with an address of 175 Pearl Street, contains an eight-story building that was renovated and converted to Class A office use in 2017. This building is connected via a pedestrian bridge that you can see in the photo, over Sands Street to 77 Sands Street, and several other buildings on the block to the north that were all part of the Watchtower complex, which was sold in 2013. The area surrounding the project site consists of a mix of residential, community facility, and commercial uses. Concord Village, 17-story buildings containing 1,000 condominium units, as well as a CUNY academic building are located to the south. To the southeast is a new 33-story mixed-use building at 203 J Street that contains residential, office, retail, and community facility uses. To the north are four buildings, as I said, that were part of the Watchtower complex. These have been converted to office, retail, and school use. To the east is Manhattan Bridge Small Park and the Manhattan Bridge, and to the west is another CUNY building, and the Brooklyn Bridge. The block is currently located in an M16 light manufacturing zone in which commercial, manufacturing, and very limited community facility uses are permitted. The proposed supportive and affordable housing project, which is a community facility use under the zoning resolution, is not permitted under the current M16 district. In order to facilitate the project, two land use actions are required. The first is a zoning map amendment to rezone the block from an M16 district to a special mixed-use district that would pair the existing M16 with an R10 district. The rezoning would expand the range of permitted uses to include the proposed use Group III community facility use, which, as I indicated, is not permitted currently. There would be no change to the existing FAR for commercial, manufacturing, and community facility uses under both the M16 and the proposed MX. The basic maximum FAR for those uses would be 10, bonusable to 12 by the provision of a public plaza or an arcade. Under the proposed rezoning, residential use would be newly permitted at a maximum FAR of 12 with a mandatory inclusionary housing component. No changes in the existing hotel building envelope are proposed, and no change in use or bulk is expected at 175 Pearl, which has seen recent reinvestment to reposition it as a Class A modern office building. The second action is a zoning text amendment to map to Appendix F to establish over the entire block a mandatory inclusionary housing area, allowing options 1 and 2 as residential use would be newly permitted. The MIH requirement will not be triggered by this project because no residential use is being proposed. As you can see, there are existing MX districts in the area, specifically north of York Street, that permit the same mix of residential, commercial, and manufacturing and community facility uses as the proposed MX district. In addition, the block is surrounded on three sides by zoning districts that today would permit the current use. To the south are R71 and R72 districts. To the east is an R6. To the west is R71 and 2, and the proposed community facility use would be allowed in those districts. The MX district would mediate between the M16 to the north and the residential uses to the south. Brenda Rosen, the CEO of Breaking Ground, will continue.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Brenda Rosen, President and CEO of Breaking Ground. Breaking Ground is a not-for-profit developer and operative supportive and affordable housing. We own and manage about 4,000 units in Manhattan, the Bronx, Brooklyn, Upstate New York, and Connecticut. We already operate four buildings in Brooklyn with a fifth currently under construction. In addition to providing housing, Breaking Ground provides street outreach to homeless people throughout Brooklyn, Queens, and Midtown Manhattan. Our proposed 90 Sands Street project will maintain the existing 508 units in the building, 415 of which will remain studios, and 93 of which are and will remain one-bedroom units. These will include 305 supportive housing units for those exiting homelessness, 202 affordable units, and one unit for the superintendent. The building's lobby will be supervised by front desk attendants at all times. Social services will be provided onsite by the Center for Urban Community Services and will be available to all residents of the building. These services will include case management, primary medical care, mental health services, employment assistance, and benefits counseling. An approximately 30,000-square community facility and/or commercial space will be created on a portion of the ground floor and two cellar levels. The existing plaza along Jay Street will be redesigned and open for public use. As Judy has already explained, this is the subject of a separate application for a chair certification. The income levels for the affordable units will range from 30% of the area median income to 100% of the area median income. Rents for the affordable units, based on the latest HUD income limits, will range from $504 a month for a studio at 30% of AMI to $2,000 per month for a one-bedroom unit and 100% of AMI. I'm happy to answer all questions you may have, and our Head of Real Estate Development is here as well. Barbara Wilks of W Architecture and Landscape Architecture will now provide you with an overview of the conceptual plan for the plaza redesign.
Hi, I'm Barbara Wilks. We have been working with the Brooklyn Office of Planning on a redesign to open up the plaza to the street. You can see a photo of the plaza here, which right now is long and narrow and devoid of amenities. So we plan to add amenities to the community, which will bring the plaza more into compliance with current plaza regulations. These will enliven the now-empty space with multiple seating types, including movable seating and additional planting areas, and remove the fence and parts of the masonry wall within the tolerances of the grade separation. This is a plan outlining those changes, which, you know, we continue to coordinate with city planning.
Is that the end of the presentation?
We're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from the Commission? Commissioner Levin.
Yes, I'm curious on the, this has to do with, this is probably a Brenda Rosen question. Will the supportive housing units and the affordable units be distributed throughout the building, or are they in separate clumps?
They'll be completely distributed throughout the building. It's how we do all of our supportive housing.
I was going to ask, yeah, does this match your experience in other buildings?
Yes, in all of them.
Okay, and the services that you described as being available, are those targeted at the supportive housing population, or are they available for all building residences?
They're available for all building residences, and through our experience, we know that many low-income tenants will take advantage of those.
Give it also. Thank you.
Commissioner Burley.
Are there no internal changes to the layouts to convert it from a hotel to the uses that you're proposing? I'm just curious as to how you may have changed the floor plan to accommodate the units.
Sure, I'll let David Beer, our VP for Real Estate Development, tell you that. Thank you.
So we're maintaining--
Sir, if you could introduce yourself.
Excuse me. David Beer, Vice President of Breaking Ground. We are planning to maintain the existing layout of the units, most of which are studio units and 92 of which are one-bedroom apartments. We will be making, in addition to just refreshing the units, we will be, the floor space will be altering, will be to create fully accessible units for 5% of the units.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you to the applicant team.
Thank you.
And those are the only folks who have signed up on this matter, but as always, if anyone else would like to be heard, please come forward. The public hearing on this matter is closed.
Barbara of Manhattan, calendar number 25, CD7 C200140PPM. A public hearing in the matter of an application for the disposition of one city-owned property concerning 266 West 96th Street. Notice, a public hearing is being held by the City Planning Commission in conjunction with the Above You appearance to receive comments related to its draft environmental impact statement. This hearing is being held pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the City Environmental Quality Review. This hearing will be continued to February 5, 2020.
We will have a 10-minute presentation by an applicant team comprised of Carol Rosenthal, Melissa Auton, Kevin Parnes, Mimi Ray Guardetzky, and Luigi Russo.
Good morning, Chair Lago, Vice Chair Knuckles, and City Planning Commissioners. I am joined by Carol Rosenthal, Partner at Fried Frank and Council for Development Partner Fetner Properties. I'm pleased to testify in support of this ULP application for the disposition of city-owned land, which will facilitate the development of a mixed-use project referred to as the 266 West 96th Street project. The proposed development includes the new construction of a 23-story building with a total of 171 units, of which 68 units will be permanently affordable, and there will also be ground floor, community facility space. The site is located at 266-270 West 96th Street, between Broadway and Weston Avenue. The site is an assemblage of two privately-owned properties as well as one city-owned property. The city has had difficulty pursuing development of the site on its own due to the high cost of demolition and environmental concerns. Through work with our development partners and their acquisition of the adjacent sites, we have been able to offset these costs and realize more units of affordable housing than a standalone project would provide. We believe the project you will hear about today strikes that balance between providing as many affordable housing units as feasible in light of the high cost involved with developing at this location. The land use action needed to facilitate the proposed project is the disposition of the city-owned property. I will now turn the presentation over to Carol Rosenthal, Partner at Fried Frank, to go over more programming details.
Good morning, Commissioners, and very happy to be here. I just want you to know, I also am joined by the project architect Luigi Russo from SCLE who's here, and also Mimi Rogadetsky from Langen, who is in charge of our brownfields program. So if there are questions about those, they're here to address them as well. So as Melissa was saying, our site is on the southern side of West 96th Street, and the building that you see, that's the disposition site, is a city-owned site. It's been unused and vacant for over a quarter of a century, and it was a former IRT electrical substation. If you go to the 96th Street subway stop and look at it, now that the building, private site on the corner is down, you can see a couple of trees growing out of it, and it looks like it's stitched together. That's from the other angle. The development program includes 171 residential units, 40% of which will be permanently affordable to households earning between up to 50%, 70%, and 130% of AMI. It's in an R10A contextual zoning district, and it will be built pursuant to zoning as of right without any waivers or any other requests along those lines. And as Melissa said, we have ground floor and below-grade community facility space. The building, we're very proud of the fact that it looks like an Upper West Side building. It was designed to have a strong street wall, a mix of stone and brick material. And in addition to that, we've included some of the existing material from the IRT station to provide a mix of limestone and precast material for the ground floor, and have taken the original arches and sort of brought them down the street. In addition to that, we've added the two cartouches that are there that were in the original station. You'll see those above around the second-floor level, so that it will look and feel very much like an Upper West Side building. The ground floor includes the residential lobby. It includes two rental spaces that will be condominium units. One will be for the Salvation Army to return, and the other will be for a community facility use. The cellar includes the additional Salvation Army space and a health club for all of the residents in the building. On the second floor, there's a lot of tenant amenity space, you'll see in the dark blue, as well as backyard terrace that will also be for all the residents. And my client has committed to have all of these amenities to be free of charge for the affordable units, so that everyone in the building can enjoy the amenities that are there. The development program of the 171 apartments, 80 will be compact studios, or sometimes called micro-units. 91 will be one-, two-, and three-bedroom apartments, and they'll be at a range, again, of the AMIs, affordable at 50%, 70%, and 130% of the AMI. This is also today, it's a hearing on the environmental review for the project. We had the demolition of the building of the substation would be a significant adverse impact. It is not a city landmark. It is not a calendar landmark. It is considered eligible to be on the New York City and State Register and eligible for city landmark. There's mitigation that includes preparing Historic American Buildings Survey, Level 2 documentation, but in addition to that, we have proposed as part of our project to include elements of the substation facade as discussed earlier. It is in the brownfields program, and it will be that means that it will be highly reviewed by the state in terms of what kind of investigation is happening for the any materials there, what kind of cleanup, and it'll be done to the highest standards for residential facility. So that those are my our prepared conversation about the project. There were questions yesterday that we're prepared to address, and we also, as I mentioned, have both the architect and Langen Vice President here to answer questions on the other matters. I wanted to talk a little bit about first about the seniors question that came up yesterday. And the project was was not was built for in order to provide a range of unit typology. So we're very excited about producing some additional compact units and having that type available. Along the way, as we spoke to the community board and spoke to others, people noted that this was a community with a high number of seniors and that it would be nice to have senior housing. We can't, because of fair housing and other things, we can't, you know, we can't set aside for seniors, but we always have been very willing and welcome and interested in reaching out to those communities and to make sure that they're part of the they have the knowledge and they're part of the process of making the request to live in the units. So we've done that by speaking with a lot of people. I recently reached out. I'm going to connect my client with Wishfish, who's very, you know, done this for years, to talk about how to market to seniors, and that was a commitment we also made at the community board, and we've begun that process. The other questions that were asked are about the micro-units themselves, which, you know, are new in the city, and Carmel Place being the most different most recent example of one that's been built. That was a pilot project. That project had a number of waivers that were needed. This project will not have any does not have any zoning or multiple dwelling code waivers. The density for the site is in keeping with what's permitted under zoning, but we do have a number of the smaller units. And there's a sense that we spoke to recently the folk at Carmel Place, you know, to understand their experience, and it's been very positive. They find that people do want to see the units before making a commitment, but for a number of people, it's a very positive thing to be able to go into a place that's furnished and ready for them. There are people who are just moving into New York, or are not going to be here for that long, or are seniors. I mean, seniors, there's a range, you know, some people want this, some people don't, but it's been very successful for them as a housing type to be able to offer. And they said even some people prefer having the smaller footprint, and so that was another comment they made. So I with that with there are other questions, please feel free. We're here to address them, as well as the rest of our team.
Thank you. Questions from the Commission. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Good morning, Carol.
Good morning, Vice Chair.
The Salvation Army will relocate back to the site, so will they have a condominium unit there? How will that work?
They will. They're going to have a brand-new condominium unit. It will be on the first on the ground floor, about, I think, 4,000 square feet, and another 2,000 or 2,500 in the lower level.
Commissioner Marin.
So is the intent, obviously, you'll have to break this up into various condominiums. You have two that are retail, and the apartment corporation will be the third, is that correct?
That's correct. That's right.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Of course.
I know you spoke about the micro-units, and I guess the concerns from started with Commissioner Delaues on the day yesterday was actually the turnover and turn-down rate. And I hear that you have been that you have research, and Carmel's been successful, but it would be interesting to know what the stats are in terms of the turnover and turn-down rates of those units.
When we spoke to Kirk Huddridge and others who are involved in that, they said that in terms of the turn-down rate, they had no hard evidence that they had more turn-downs. Antidoteally, they sensed that it was, you know, maybe some small percentage addition, but it hasn't affected the units being rented, leased, and, you know, again, Kirk pointed out that they have 300 to 400 applicants per unit for the affordable units, and there's, you know, there's plenty of people who are very happy and excited to be able to live in the micro-units.
Will the micro-units be the only units that are furnished? Because you did mention they come furnished.
About most, not all, but many of the micro-units will become furnished. Those are the only units that will be furnished. The others will not.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Thank you for this, Carol. You came armed to address the questions that
I hope so.
Were on our mind. And I went home yesterday and dug out the Commission's report from that ADAPT NYC, what was it called? ADAPT, APT.
Or Making Room from CHPC.
Whatever it was that allowed the Carmel Place to happen. Can you explain to me why that one needed a MERL override for a number of zoning issues, and one of them was unit size? How is it you've got units that are the same size as those? Why do the units on 96th Street not need a zoning waiver?
So there are two reasons. One reason is that the zoning text has changed, I think, as a result of the work from CHPC and others. The 400 square foot per unit has been reduced. That was at one point in the inclusionary housing. That was a requirement that's been reduced because people have found it didn't it didn't really work. The second reason is that our we have the Carmel Place is all micro-units. We have a mixture, and the way the density calculations work in the zoning resolution is it's a number, you take all of the residential floor area and you divide it by a number, and that's how many units you can have. So when you can, you know, when you mix and match, you don't have the same issues, but that's those are the two reasons why.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then more qualitatively, in 2013, when we were first thinking about these micro-units and how what it would take to make them successful, we realized the importance of larger-than-usual common areas, because the idea was that people would gather outside their small units and find build community and also find some relief from being squished, and the importance of really careful design with large windows and thoughtful built-ins and, you know, additional features that were going to make these small units successful.
Correct.
Are those features going to be built in here?
Yes. I mean, this is why I specifically, when we stopped at the second floor, talked about how much of the space is going to be tenant amenity space, and there's a second floor, and also in the cellar level, there's the health club. So that is that is part of it. And on the furnishings, we are contemplating, the developers contemplating, using the same resource, you know, resource stuff that furnishings that were used in Carmel Place. I think I have some, yeah, I have some shots of those. This is from Carmel Place, and this is what the units, how they're furnished and how they look.
Okay. Thank you. And then I guess a question for city planning. I realized that when we launched the pilot program or approved the pilot program, and in 2013, we noted that it would be important to be successful, we needed to incorporate a clearly articulated evaluation process, and HPD was supposed to be providing annual information on the kinds of issues that have emerged in this discussion. I wonder if those reports have been provided and if we could see them and think about them in considering this application.
Yeah, thank you for flagging. If you notice that I stepped outside, it was to email Louise Carroll, the HPD Commissioner, about this.
Okay.
So that strikes me as a useful discussion at post-hearing follow-up.
Okay, good. And then if I may, one more
Of course.
... question. I wonder if you could address the issues that were focused on, well, by the community board, but which had more to do with a construction workforce and outreach. I think you've addressed the outreach question partially, at least with respect to the compact units, but also the borough presidents' issues related to the quantity of affordable units, particularly considering that 48% of the lot area that's involved here is city-owned property, and we always try to push as many units, you know, get as many units as possible on city-owned property, and also the depth of affordability.
Okay. So on the issues of, I'll start with the second and then go to the start with the harder question.
Sorry for piling a whole lot in there.
That's okay. So in connection with the, you know, percentage and levels of affordability, the site has been a very difficult site. It's, as I said before, it's, you know, for a quarter of a century, it's been vacant and deteriorating. There was a ULP in 1990 to do something with the site that never materialized. It's only when the developer was able to do a transaction with the two adjacent sites and bring them in together was something really able to move forward. And it's a, you know, it's an IRT substation that's going to need demolition. There's a lot of uncertainty about, there won't be because we're doing testing, but for someone coming in, there's a lot of uncertainty about what the environmental conditions are. So it's not an easy site. And so only when Fetner Properties was able to bring in everyone do we have something that really worked. And the reason it really works is because we're able now to cross-subsidize. So if you if you had the IRT substation as a standalone building, our calculations with HPD are you'd have one level of subsidy that would be four times what it is right now. So you don't have the other market rate units to cross-subsidize the construction and the operation of the facility. So the numbers were very negotiated with HPD. They did their job. They negotiated hard, and one of the results of their negotiation was that all of the units will be permanently affordable. There will be no, you know, we don't need all of those units for the for IH, inclusionary housing, but we have some for all of them will be affordable. So that's where we got to the point where we are with the numbers in terms of that. I will say, I think HPD wants to say something about that as well, so let me hand it over to Melissa.
Hi, Melissa Auton from HPD. I just want to reiterate what Carol said. The current proposal is strikes the balance between the number of affordable units provided with in light of the high costs that the site conditions of this site create. And I also just want to add that there are more permanently affordable units being promised here than is required by the inclusionary housing bonus they're receiving. And finally, negotiations about affordability levels are ongoing throughout the ULP process.
Yes, I understand we're not we're not we're not completely done with those.
Okay, all right. So I hope they continue and produce deeper affordability. Let's just put that out there.
Going back to your question about one of the other community board requirements or conditions having to do with the construction committee, we are completely on with that. I mean, that's something that we'll agree to do. Community Board seven has a very experienced and effective mechanism, working with developers on that, plus the developer is very experienced. It's a it's a family business that's been doing real estate with many, many properties in the city over, you know, the last three generations, and they're very willing and able to work with the community on that. It's important, I mean, it's helpful for everyone. We've also, in that regard, we've reached out to, I think, at least half a dozen, if not more, buildings around the area. We met with We met with people from the Columbia, which is the co-op that's across, condo that's across the street. And so we've been trying even now to be good neighbors and let people know what's going on.
Other questions? Then thank you to the applicant team.
Thank you. Thank you all.
We're now going to begin with testimony from the public. As is our practice, we will begin with speakers in opposition and then speakers in support, with each speaker being limited to three minutes. Our first speaker is Robert Bornstein, who will be followed by Lizette Chaparro.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and the committee. My name is Robert Bornstein. I live in one of the several buildings adjacent to the combined site, and I'm speaking in opposition. I have previously sent a letter to the commission, which its secretary told me was distributed to the commission as email. I have a hard copy. I'd like to hand it up as an exhibit to be...
The secretary.
...this hearing for purposes of the official hearing, since I'm limited to only three minutes. So if Greta Thunberg were here today and was reflecting not only on your citywide responsibilities, but on your planet-wide ones, she would tell you that a valuable New York City metropolitan transit asset is targeted to be squandered by this building project. Now, you may say, well, okay, Mr. Bornstein, you're a NIMBY, you're here because the sun's going to be blighted out from several of your windows in your apartment. Why should we listen to a word you have to say? And here's what I have to say about that. Some of that is contained in the letter, in fact, all of it's contained in the letter. As you've heard, the asset is a decommissioned subway power generating station, and as is reported in various sources, neighborhood reporting, it appears that the conduit tunnels, which contain the connecting cables from the power generating station, are still very much in existence and lead to the subway system itself, which is less than a half a block away. Only two blocks away, in terms of absolute distances the crow flies, from the power generating station is the Hudson River. Why am I talking about the Hudson River? Well, there was a Roosevelt Island Title Energy Project, which was a demonstration project, and it demonstrated the feasibility of generating electricity from title energy. And as one report said, when that project reaches its peak, it would be capable of generating enough power for 75,000 homes. Now, if you translate that into electricity for the subway...
Thank you, Mr. Bornstein.
Since I'm probably the only speaker, I would like to claim request...
I'm afraid not.
Additional time.
I'm afraid that's not possible, but, one, your materials have already been distributed. Thank you for putting them in writing. That's always helpful. And other questions for Mr. Bornstein? Yes, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Mr. Bornstein, I haven't had the opportunity to read your submission, but I guarantee you I will. But if I understand your, your presentation, you, well, let me see if I do actually understand it, you would like to see that site preserved as a, an energy resource? Is that the essence of your...
Yes, yes, I do. And not only that, the proposal as it stands violates the city charter because there's no competitive bidding and that the mayor has not signed off on it.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Bornstein. Our next speaker is Lizette Chaparro, and she will be followed by Mark Diller.
Good morning, Chair Lago and Commissioners. My name is Lizette Chaparro, and I'm here on behalf of Manhattan Borough President Gail Brewer to provide her testimony regarding the disposition of this city-owned site. I have long believed that when city-owned land is redeveloped into housing, that housing should be 100% affordable. In March 1990, when the city first proposed to dispose of the site in question, Community Board Seven noted that the site was, quote, "an invaluable resource, not only as an opportunity to raise capital, but also as a location for critically needed services", unquote. The board further noted the lack of sites on the Upper West Side that could be repurposed for public use. That statement remains true 30 years later. New York City is in the midst of an affordable housing crisis, and we cannot forego an opportunity to build more affordable housing. In 1990, the city was trying to raise money through the sale of its properties, including this one. Policies and priorities have since shifted, and today we are evaluating a proposal to give the site to a developer for a nominal price in exchange for the construction of affordable units. This, sorry, this parcel makes up 48% of the project's site, yet the applicant proposes to make only 40% of the residential units affordable. This is unacceptable. And what is even worse, only 36% of the residential square footage is proposed to be affordable. We cannot, in the midst of an affordable housing shortage, allow this to happen. When it comes to the compact units that are proposed by the applicants, more than half of those would be designated as affordable housing units. Furthermore, 15 of those compact units are proposed to be set at 130% AMI, making them accessible only to individuals earning $97,000 a year. This is also unacceptable. The EAS prepared by the applicant rightfully cites policies in both One NYC and Housing New York. One of the tenets of Housing New York is to utilize city-owned properties to produce affordable housing in a more effective way. When we allow a city-owned property to comprise half of a site, but settle for a development in which less than half of the units are affordable, we are not meeting that goal. Furthermore, this project is slated to receive a number of benefits. In addition to being able to purchase a city-owned site for a nominal amount, the developer is expected to receive an HPD subsidy, a property tax abatement, and tax credits to the brownfield cleanup program. In the spirit of making effective use of this city-owned site, I suggest that the following changes be made to the proposed development. Number one, a minimum of 65% of the units in the project should be affordable. Number two, at least half of the affordable units should be for households earning up to 60% AMI. And number three, the compact units should comprise no more than 15% of the total number of units in the project.
Very efficient use of time. Questions for Ms. Chaparro? Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mark Diller, who will be followed by Sarah Lind.
My name is Mark Diller. I'm the chair of Community Board Seven Manhattan, not the one in Queens that you were hearing from earlier today. I guess it's number seven day here.
We love all our number sevens.
Thank you. After two public hearings on this project, Community Board Seven, on balance, recommends approval of the application with certain recommendations and certain conditions. We reached that, that vote, by the way, was 36 to 03 with one person recusing. We do so because the project achieves two essential goals for our community, one of which is 68 units of affordable housing. Of course, we want more, but 68 units of affordable housing in an area where so much of the development in our area is as-of-right, including a hole in the ground immediately to the, to the east of this site, which will, we believe, contain no affordable housing. So we, we're trying not to let the perfect be the enemy of the good here. And because it will clean up a pernicious, toxic site, neighbors in other construction projects and in my community work have often complained about the trickle of brown liquids that emanate from this IRT site and populate the backyards of other buildings. This is the one chance, we believe, to clean that up, and that's an important benefit to this project. The microunits certainly were a topic of conversation at Community Board Seven, and we are concerned that they be appropriately allocated, but we are convinced that this presents an opportunity for those who are ready to leave shelter, or those who are in their first affordable or independent life apartment, can make use of these small units, and they appear to be intelligently designed. The outreach to seniors is a must. There was mention of WishFish, which is our beloved West Side Federation of Senior in Supportive Housing. As one of many outreach partners, we view that as so critical, we put it as one of our conditions for approval. The toxic cleanup, we note, is subject voluntarily to the state brownfield program. Of course, that provides certain benefits to the developer, but what it provides to our community is state and independent certification and clarification that the cleanup has actually been done. There's no self-certification here. One of the buildings immediately to the west of this proposed site had numerous problems with self-certification when it was under construction, so the idea of an independent audit of that compliance is particularly meaningful to us. We have, we share the borough president's concern about affordability. We may have expressed it somewhat differently. It is in one of our recommendations. The recommendation is that 130% of AMI does not meet the needs of the depth of affordability for our community and for our city. We recommend that 75%...
Percent. Okay, we've got that.
Be below 100%. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Diller. Questions from the commission? Thank you for your service on the community board as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Sarah Lind.
Hi, good morning. My name is Sarah Lind. I'm also on Community Board Seven. I serve as the cosecretary. So first, I will just second everything that Mark said. He said it very eloquently, and no need to go over that again. I also wanted to come here personally to speak to you. In August of last year, my mother-in-law, who's 80 years old, was forced to move into our son's bedroom with us because she cannot find an affordable housing place to live. She would love to have a microunit. I know there's been conversation about these microunits and that maybe they're not adequate for people to live in. That would be perfect for her situation, and I'm sure she would like it better than sharing a bedroom with my five-year-old son. So I would encourage us to embrace this more and to have more of these microunits in our city. I will say, given her current financial situation, she probably couldn't afford the microunits in this building, so I would echo the borough president and Mark in saying that we would ask for slightly deeper affordability, especially for a unit that's small. But I think, again, to echo Mark, we cannot let the perfect be the enemy of the good. We need more housing, especially, you know, as he mentioned, so much of the housing on the Upper West Side is market rate. We need more units like this, so I fully support the development. I also just want to, to the environmental point, because the speaker came to our community board meeting as well and mentioned his concerns about the site, I think that if you are concerned about climate, you know that one of the best things we can do for our global climate is to have more housing in dense, transit-rich urban areas, just like this. So I think that, in fact, if anything, we need more, not less. I think title energy sounds great. I'd love to see us explore it. I don't think we need to preserve this site that's been empty for 30 years in order to do that. So we support the project, and thank you very much.
Thank you also for the service on the community board and for putting a very personal face on the matter before us. Questions for Ms. Lind? Thank you. Those are the only folks who have signed up to speak on this matter. If anyone else would be interested, please come forward. And I'll note that this public hearing will be continued until the 5th of February, and this is because of the technicality of how the notice went out.
Chair, we just wanted to note that there's been a letter submitted by 32BJ.
No test, no second bite at the apple, Carol. You know that.
Okay, we're going to go to Queens and come back to Manhattan. Borough of Queens, calendar number 28 and 29. Calendar number 28, CD2, C180154ZMQ. Calendar number 29, N180155ZRQ. A public hearing in the matter of applications for the zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning the 52nd Street rezoning.
We're going to have a 10-minute presentation by an applicant team comprised of Richard Lobel, Fay Ann Baton, Stephen Pomerantz, and Nick LaBaris.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. Richard Lobel of Sheldon Nobel PC for the applicant. I'm joined by Fay Ann Baton of my office, as well as Nick LaBaris, the project architect, and Stephen Pomerantz, the applicant. So we're here for the 52nd Street rezoning. As you can see from the circled area in the zoning map, which is quite dense, we'll go to the tax map for this. This property is located in a current R5B zoning district between two higher-density residential districts. So to the south along Queens Boulevard, there's an existing R7X, which has been in place for at least 10 years. And to the west and north of the property, along both the west side of 52nd Street and along Roosevelt Avenue, there's an existing R6 zoning district. All of those districts, by the way, have C23 commercial overlays. So what this has resulted in with regards to the site, and we go to the area map, has been development typical of R7X and R6 zoning districts. So the R7X district permits a maximum of 5 FAR in its current iteration without inclusionary. And so to the south of our site, on our block, there's an 11-story building. This immediately butts the rezoning area. In fact, the 11-story building on the lot on the southwest portion of the block actually has 2,000 square feet located in the rezoning area. So there is an 11-story building to the south of us. There is a nine-story building on Queens Boulevard across 52nd Street, and there are larger-density buildings located along Roosevelt Avenue, as long as, as well as development sites and buildings along 52nd Street. So the area basically generally reflects a larger, a larger bulk. The R5B current zoning district extends a number of blocks to the east here. However, on our block front, it primarily is, resulted in low-density commercial and open uses. So one of the reasons that we feel that the R7A here is appropriate, the rezoning, is that you've got a current R7X, a current R6. These essentially surround the development site and the project area, and so the R7A would, in effect, act as a bridge here. It would encourage contextual mixed-use development, which would complement the existing development in the area. The proposed project also includes a C23 overlay, which would allow for commercial and other uses consistent also with the land use in the area. I would note that with regards to the rezoning area, and maybe I'll go to the tax map here, while the rezoning area looks fairly broad, there's roughly six lots that would be affected, a seventh lot, which is located mostly within the rezoning area. The remainder of the lots are more corrective. You could see along the northern portion of the rezoning area, there's the rear portion of three lots. These would stay primarily within the existing R6. As well as was mentioned on Lot 1 to the southwestern portion of the block, this would remain primarily R7X. So as far as the actual development sites are concerned, there's the area highlighted in red, and then there's three remaining sites. The area highlighted in red is the development site. This formerly was the site of Baby King products. These were baby and toddler products that were produced in a factory at the site. Eventually, the manufacturing of the, these products was actually sent over to Queens in Jamaica. So it's, these are still, this is still a local population and a local business, but the site itself has remained vacant for some time. So now you've got a 15,000-square-foot rough assemblage on the, in the project area. You've got a 7,000-square-foot site with a two-story warehouse building. And then you've got vacant and open uses, primarily used for parking. So this rezoning would really result in a beneficial development, and we would foresee that happening in short order. I know that there were some architectural questions posed at the review session. I have Nick LaBaris, who's happy to answer those. I will tell you that from a zoning standpoint, the building that would result, and it looks to me like, what have I got? Okay, good. It looks to me, right. So the building that would result would be a, an eight-story building. Of course, this is illustrative, but the building would contain roughly 60,000 square feet of floor area devoted to residential uses on floors 2 through 8, as well as a ground floor devoted for commercial and community facility uses. The, the 60,000 square feet of residential would result in our projections in roughly 60 units, in accordance with the illustrative diagrams. The ground floor would result in roughly 8,500 square feet of non-residential uses. This would, as per the current iteration, include roughly 4,000 square feet of commercial use and 4,500 square feet of community facility use. These uses were essentially arrived at both after an analysis internally of the project, but also after discussion with Community Board Two. but also after discussion with community board two. Community board two was very thoughtful in their consideration of this matter. They understood the fact that the site really wasn't, and this area of this block front really wasn't a benefit to the surrounding area, that there was a lot of high-density residential around, and that this also was very central to transportation with the seven train having to stop immediately adjacent to the project area on 52nd and Roosevelt. So the, one of the discussions around the community board was the use of the ground floor space. And in its resolutions, there was a condition with regards to a use of roughly 4,500 square feet for community facility use. We did discuss this with the community board, while we don't have anything definitive at this point, because we are obviously in ULP, and this is not a settled matter. We did discuss the possibility of a pre-K. This is something which was attractive both to the applicant and to the area. So with that, I think that Nick can probably answer some of the architectural questions that were posed.
Sure. Hi, Nick LaBaris, Archimero. So as Rich touched on, this is something which is very broadly contextual here. We feel that this, the R, the R7X zoning over here is quite high, and this is a good blending back in to the R, to the R6s. What we had proposed over here is illustrative, but it's a 55-foot-high base height, which we think would be reasonable. And just to touch back really quick on something that Rich touched on, I just want to elaborate on it just a tiny bit. You can see over here, 54th Street, it kind of creates this national, this natural boundary, excuse me, and it's, it's, it would seem that this entire, this entire area could be probably up zoned a bit. So when, when we looked at this street particularly, like, like Rich said, you know, there is this stuff that's across the street, you know, which is of a, of a certain height, of a certain scale, that the building, which you could see over here, fits in with pretty well. So this is, this is a rendering. You can see the balconies that we have proposed. The R7A is, works, works very well for us because we could mass a building which, which has a certain depth, which lets us kind of push in and out at the facade. So you get this very lively streetscape. And I think the two questions that you, that you had posed, one, one had to do with, with the route to the bicycle parking. So let me just address that. So over here, we show the bicycle parking over here to the left, but it could be also to the right. The way that it's set up right now, since, since this is attended parking, you have a dedicated drive aisle, you know, which, which would be kept empty, you know, so people would have access to the bicycle parking. So again, it is illustrative. And I think the other question was if we have rooftop amenity space? And I think that we would have to, because on the, on the first floor, we propose so much space be given to this community facility use, it's not quite, quite possible to put the required residential rec space, like, within the building. So we would place it up on the roof. So we would have rooftop green space that would be used for, for rec space. And if there's any, if, if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Are any other members of the applicant team wanting to speak before we turn it over to questioning?
Chair, I think that that concludes our presentation. We have everyone available for questions.
Okay, questions from the commission? Okay, then I will thank the applicant team.
Thank you, Chair Commissioners.
Those are the only folks who have signed up to speak, but if anyone is interested in being heard on this matter, please come forward. This public hearing is closed.
Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers 26 and 27. Calendar number 26, CDs 2, 3, and 5. Calendar number 27, N200107ZRM. A public hearing in the matter of application for zoning map and zoning tax amendments concerning the Union Square South Hotel special permit.
As we had a presentation by the department team yesterday on this matter, we won't repeat it again today. I will just note that this is a proposal to extend in Union Square South or to impose a requirement that hotels be permitted only upon the issuance of a special permit. Our first speaker is Andrew Berman, and he will be followed by Harry Bubbins.
This is not a, this is not a 10-minute presentation. Is it a 10-minute presentation?
No, it's three minutes. There's not a team presentation.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Andrew Berman, and I'm representing Village Preservation, the largest membership organization in Greenwich Village, the East Village, and NoHo, which is the area directly impacted by this proposal. The proposed hotel special permit plan offers virtually no protections for the Greenwich Village and East Village neighborhoods south of Union Square. They're facing a flood of demolitions and out-of-scale, out-of-character new development, largely fueled by tech development and exacerbated by the recent approval by this body and the City Council of the 14th Street Tech Hub. By the Department of City Planning's own analysis, if this hotel special permit measure is enacted and special permits for hotels in the area are denied, low-scale residential historic buildings will still be destroyed to make way for high-rise commercial development. The only difference is that the new development will be office towers rather than hotels. This is cold comfort at best for our neighborhoods. In fact, while we've lobbied for restrictions on large-scale hotel development in the area, office building development is the much larger driver of demolition and out-of-character construction. To limit one to merely pave the way for the other, as the Department of City Planning's own EAS projects will happen, offers no relief whatsoever to these predominantly residential low-to-mid-rise neighborhoods. Instead, what the City Planning Commission should be doing, in concert with the Landmarks Preservation Commission, is extending landmark protections to the myriad historic resources in the area and changing the zoning to reinforce the predominantly residential and low-to-mid-rise character of the neighborhood, as we have called for and as both effective, both affected community boards have long endorsed. I will remind you that nearly, for nearly five years, our organization, with the full support of community boards two and three, has argued for contextual zoning for the sections of this, of this area that don't have it, adding affordable housing incentives or requirements for the areas without them, and reducing the incentive for oversized commercial development in the, in the areas where zoning allows it. The department has consistently refused to consider such measures. On its own, the proposed special, hotel special permit measure is not half a loaf. It's no loaf at all. We urge the department to come back with a proposal that offers real protections for Greenwich Village and the East Village.
Berman, questions? Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Harry Bubbins, who will be followed by Joseph McGee.
Thank you. I'll be continuing Village Preservation's testimony. It should be noted that the environmental assessment statement for this proposal is in some ways even more disappointing and disturbing than the proposal itself. The EAS specifically calls buildings which it identifies as likely development sites like 88 East 10th Street and 11 East 12th Street, quote, "not historically significant," and claims that the neighborhood would suffer no negative impact upon its character if these low-rise residential buildings were replaced with high-rise office towers. This is especially troubling, given that these largely intact circa 1840 Greek Revival rowhouses were also the home and studios of great American artists, Willem de Kooning, Reginald Marsh, and J. Alden Weir at a critical stages of their careers. In fact, while the EAS was recently corrected to eliminate some of the most glaring mistakes we identified, including characterizing 17 stories of apartments as commercial space and failing to identify several landmark and National Register-listed buildings as historic resources, the analysis for this proposal still leaves out literally scores of historically and architecturally significant buildings. Worse, it says there would be no loss to the neighborhood character if they and the residential units many of them contain are replaced by office towers. The response to this proposal has been virtually unanimous. Community Boards two and three both rejected it, urging the city to come back with something which addresses overdevelopment in the area, and Community Board five echoed their sentiments. Turnout at public hearings has been unanimous in this regard. The department itself has received more than 750 letters from our members alone expressing similar sentiments. And just this morning, the Manhattan Borough President's Office issued her resolution, which, her recommendation, which is a resounding support of this position articulated by the community boards and our organization. The only entities which seem to want or support this proposal are the one union which endorsed the mayor in his failed presidential campaign and the large hotel operators who have generously donated to the mayor and see this measure as a way of eliminating future competition. The only reason why this measure for this specific area is being advanced is because it was part of the deal between the council member Carlina Rivera and the mayor for her agreement to vote for the tech.
Sir.
Thanks a lot. Any questions?
Are there questions for Mr. Bubbins? Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Joseph McGee, who will be followed by Frederica Seigel.
Good morning. I'm Joseph McGee. I'm a resident across the street from, from where this hotel's being built. And, you know, I think the two gentlemen have been very articulate in, in their reasons for why it shouldn't be built. I just want to say, I see it's no help to our community or to our street or to the village, which, you know, one of the reasons why I moved there is because it's historic. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. McGee? Commissioner Levin, would you mind answering a question?
I just wondered, could you identify the street you're talking about? This application isn't for any individual hotel. So, but you have a concern.
Well, I live at 12 East 12th Street. It's across the street from me, and it's, you know, you say it's Union Square, but actually it's on 12th Street between.
12 East 12th.
Between 15 University Place.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Frederica Seigel, followed by Deborah Solomon.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Frederica Seigel, and I'm representing CB2. I think Andrew and Harry represented our opinion very well, and so I'm scrapping most of my testimony. We agree, CB2, that it's important to ensure that future hotel developments are compatible with their surroundings. However, the amendment does not address the overdevelopment issues that the area already faces. Extending the Union Square Special District, an area with vastly more commercial character, into the south, will open the door to further changes in land use policy that will treat this area not as a part of Greenwich Village, but as a part of the city's commercial core. And it will further extend Midtown South and Silicone Alley into this special area. We have long called for landmarking the area, and we believe that this is an essential first step. We are also on record as opposed to both hotel and office tower development, and we are in support of contextual rezoning, including a provision and incentives for inclusionary housing. This proposed amendment will do nothing to address our concerns. For all these reasons, CB2 recommends denial of the special permit until the city has implemented zoning changes for this area and that will protect its predominantly residential character and its historic buildings. And I have to say that, sitting here this morning and hearing all of the efforts the city is making to find affordable housing, it's really a shame that this special, if this special permit passes, it will reduce the chances of that happening. The community board, CB2, is fully committed to being an active partner in the city's effort to generate affordable housing, and we look for every opportunity to do that. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seigel, and thank you, as always, for your service on the community board. Questions? Thanks. Our next speaker is Deborah Solomon, to be followed by John Center.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Deborah Solomon. I'm an independent animator. I didn't think I needed to do that. I'm an independent animator, and I live and work and ride my bike around the East Village every day. And I love riding around my neighborhood, I live on 12th Street, because of the character of the neighborhood. It is almost, I feel like I'm in the country in a way when I'm riding my bike home. This proposal does not offer the protections that I really feel that the village deserves. And from my point of view, on my bike, what's the difference between riding by a large-scale hotel and a large-scale office building? It's just the sign-out front. The village, and what I love about it, and what everyone loves about it, is its residential in character. Ripping down residential buildings that are characteristic of the area is a huge mistake. The neighborhood draws visitors from all over the world because of its charming character. As a resident, I ask you to please protect the village and consider landmarking our neighborhood. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you, Ms. Solomon, and I have now a new definition of what a true New Yorker is, someone who, like me and a number of members of the commissions, are art and bicyclists and think bicycling around the city is like a trip in the country.
Right. Thank you so much.
Questions for Ms. Solomon? Thank you. Nope, you're off the hook. Our next speaker is John Center, to be followed by Mary Fran Loftus.
I'm John Center. I've lived in the East Village for nearly four decades, and for the last 25 years within the area this proposed ULP action would impact. The University Place Broadway and the 3rd and 4th Avenue corridors from 14th Street to 8th Street need protection from inappropriate and rampant development. The city proposal for special permitting for hotels falls far short of what is necessary. Therefore, as both community boards two and three already have done, I urge City Planning to reject it. Overwhelming development pressure continues in this area. Massive commercial projects are underway, and since adequate zoning and landmark protections are lacking, even more inappropriate development looms. I've been reading Derek Thompson in The Atlantic. Commissioners, if you haven't, you should be too. In his January 16, 2020 article, "Why Manhattan Skyscrapers Are Empty," Thompson writes, quote, "In Manhattan, the homeless shelters are full and the luxury skyscrapers are vacant. But the bus is upon us. Today, nearly half of the Manhattan luxury condo units that have come onto the market in the last five years are still unsold," end quote. In October 2018, Thompson wrote about a problem that still persists, quote, "commercial rents that have ascended to an altitude where small businesses cannot breathe. Many landlords don't want to offer short-term leases to stores if they think a richer, longer-term deal is forthcoming from a national brand with money to burn. The landlord waiting game is denuding New York of its particularity," end quote. In the hotel sector, the huge Moxie has been open on East 11th Street for four months. Several residential buildings once stood on that site. If instead of a hotel, there was a commercial office building on the site, that would not be better. New commercial office, new commercial development must be more thoughtful and contextual. Unchecked, our developers don't do that. Their build-baby-build approach is not working. Their projects must do more than just stress our already fragile infrastructure. Just this month, in one week, Uptown experienced two massive water main breaks. There's plenty that needs to be done in our city to fix our infrastructure, and my union brothers and sisters should be doing that work. We need zoning and/or landmark protections, not piecemeal special permitting that could worsen commercial development." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Center. Any questions from the commission? Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Fran Loftus, to be followed by Richard Moses.
The city proposal for special permitting for hotels falls far short of what is necessary. Therefore, as both community boards two and three have already done, I urge City Planning to reject it. We need zoning and landmark protections, not piecemeal special permitting that could worsen commercial development. It feels like too much of my life is now taken up by fighting City Hall and its agencies, including City Planning, who are supposed to protect our city but often do not. The EAS for this city proposal is another example. I trust Village Preservation's meticulous researcher's analysis that there are omissions and inaccuracies in it. I'm not an expert, but I did a quick reading of the EAS and easily found an inaccuracy. I fear there are many more. One example, page six, item four, open space B, is the project located within an underserved area in Manhattan? The response is no. However, the link to Manhattan leads to another link to an underserved area chart prepared by the New York City Parks Department. That link clearly shows that the proposed project area falls within an underserved area in community districts two and three. This EAS seems to be a continuation of an attitude that the city knows best. I disagree. City agencies should better listen to and address residents' concerns. I urge you to reject this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Loftus? Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Richard Moses, to be followed by Jennifer Smith.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Richard Moses. I'm with the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative, a local grassroots, not-for-profit organization that includes the entire traditional Lower East Side, which also includes the East Village. Lower East Side Preservation Initiative respectfully requests that the New York City Planning Commission vote against the Department of City Planning's application to require special permits for hotel construction south of Union Square without the landmarking and zoning of the area. and zoning protections necessary to maintain the area's historic, architectural, and residential character. To help mitigate the effect of increased commercial development in the proposed zone, the city should create a new historic district to expand the East Village Lower East Side Historic District to include St. Mark's Place and the blocks to the north, designate as an individual landmark the Greek Revival 88 East 10th Street for its architectural character and cultural history as William de Kooning's home and studio, and review the historic resources in the area that were identified by the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission during the 2008 East Village rezoning environmental impact statement, as well as the inventory of historic East Village properties that was presented to the LPC earlier this year by Village Preservation, Lower East Side Preservation Initiative, and others for potential landmarking. Additionally, Village Preservation, in their letter dated November 12, 2019, listed oversights in the seeker's environmental assessment statement, as Harry Bubbins pointed out, that still need to be addressed. And despite recent modifications, the EAS still admits important historic sites in the area. The special architectural, historic, and residential character of this area of the East Village deserves both holistic and careful consideration and treatment. These shortcomings should be addressed before the proposal is approved. Additionally, DCP's own EAS shows that about 70% of the lots in this area are used for residential purposes, including those with commercial ground floors. Offices, hotels, and other commercial uses account for only 15% of the lots in this area. This illustrates how this proposed measure, on its own, is a meaningless gesture which will address none of our concerns about preserving that neighborhood character. Paired with real landmark protections and real zoning protections, that incentivizes housing over historic office buildings in these predominantly residential neighborhoods, it would. But disappointingly, the city seems to be nowhere near ready or willing to do that yet. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Moses. Questions? Our next speaker will be Jennifer Smith, to be followed by Carol Putresiz.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Smith. I am a resident of 85 East 10th Street in the East Village. I'm here to say that I oppose the Union Square South Hotel special permit. I believe that offices and hotels are destroying the character of my residential low-rise and historical neighborhood, and it will continue to encourage the overdevelopment in the area. We need more restrictions on the large-scale hotel commercial and office space development, which leads to the demolition and out-of-character, oversized construction of empty buildings in my neighborhood. It also displaces longtime residents and does not create more affordable housing in the neighborhood, which is sorely needed. Additionally, the residents of my street, East 10th Street, between Third and Fourth Avenue, which identifies a likely new development site at 88 East 10th Street and also another one at 11 East 12th Street, have endured years of construction. Construction that goes on with special permits being allowed for nights and weekends. I endured four years of dust in my apartment and noise at 5:00 in the morning, continuing until 9:00 at night, where the developer of 80 East 10th Street applied for special permits every single weekend of the summer. The residents in my building could not open our windows without dust or noise coming in. Additionally, there's multiple construction projects all over the neighborhood. It displaces our longtime residents' parking and just creates an overall nuisance. Lastly, I just want to say I support landmarking and preserving protection for the East Village and Greenwich Village, which bring in tourism from all over the world to visit our beautiful city, to walk around, and these new constructions are out of character with the existing historical buildings. Thank you for considering.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions? Our next speaker will be Carol Putresiz, followed by Jane Citrin.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Carol Putrechez. I'm a New York City native and a resident of 30 years of the East Village and a member of the Bowery Alliance of Neighbors. This plan offers nothing to the residents of the neighborhoods involved. Rather, it will strip these neighborhoods of their character, uniqueness, charm, and, most importantly, their history. Neighborhoods with their unique characteristics are becoming extinct in Manhattan, being replaced by sky-high office towers and out-of-scale residential buildings. At this rate, Manhattan will look like Dubai in 10 years, a sad but scary thought. We need protection for our historic neighborhoods, Soho, NoHo, and the East Village. And by the way, this is not my usual attire. This is a Godzilla t-shirt, and for me, it represents Rebny and what it's doing to New York City. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for the testimony. Our next speaker is Jane Citrin, followed by David Eisenbeck.
Good morning. My name is Jane Citrin. I live in 11 Fifth Avenue. I've lived in that part of the village for over 30 years, and before that, before it was designated in the South Village for 11 years. I don't have that much to add. I think everybody's successfully covered their bases. I just beseech you people to listen to what people are saying. In addition to which, affordable housing is also very important because a lot of us want people to live in the neighborhood, not just because they're entitled and they can afford to pay very high prices to live there. That's part of the major character of our neighborhood, and we need to preserve it and save it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Citrin. Questions? Then it's on to you, Mr. Eisenbeck.
I'm David Eisenbeck. I'm a historian at Columbia University. I live on East 12th Street of Third Avenue. I just wanted to finish the last paragraph of Andrew and Harry's presentation for Village Preservation. DCP's own EAS shows that about 70% of the lots in this area are used for residential purposes, including those with commercial ground floors. Offices, hotels, and other commercial uses account for only 15% of the lots in the area. This illustrates how this proposed measure, on its own, is a meaningless gesture which will address none of our concerns about preserving our neighborhood character. Paired with real landmark protections and real zoning protections, that incentivizes housing over office buildings in these predominantly residential neighborhoods, it will. But disappointingly, the city seems to be nowhere near ready or willing to do that. What separates this area is that it is a New Yorker's New York neighborhood. It is not a tourist neighborhood. Small businesses are geared for us. They are not geared for people just coming in and not interested in the things that we are interested, the things that we need. Your job is to preserve our neighborhoods for us. There are plenty of places for the tourists, all right? Plenty of places. This is a special corridor that connects the East Village with Greenwich Village and that beautiful walk down those great streets with these historic buildings, including these 1840 Greek Revival buildings that are historically significant, all right? To destroy this and to surrender it to Rebny, to surrender it to Bill de Blasio and Carlina Rivera, who have hatched this plan, which you could be complicit in, a plan that has been opposed by the city, the community boards two and three and five, by the borough president, do not allow yourself to be used by Rebny, by these politicians who do not care about the character of New York for New Yorkers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Eisenbeck?
All right.
Nope, you're off the hook. Those are all the folks who have signed up to speak. If anyone who hasn't spoken would like to be heard, please come forward. And we'll ask you to fill out a card after your testimony and to identify yourself now.
Thank you very much. My name is Donna Robin Littman. I have been living on East 14th Street for 46 years. I had an office on Broadway and 14th Street for 17 years. This neighborhood is my home. I don't want to add anything. What was said was very filling, very correct, and extremely disturbing to me. I have been feeling very sad for the last many years as I watch my neighborhood be mowed over. I watch small businesses close, small businesses that provide services, and huge impersonal buildings come into the neighborhood. And I ask you, please, please protect us and please keep New York, New York. Don't let it be, I feel like I'm a tourist somewhere, instead of being at home anymore. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Littman. Questions? And again, if anyone else would like to be heard, now is the time. The public hearing is closed. And Madam Secretary, any other matters before the commission?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, then the meeting is over.
Thank you.